Okay, good afternoon, everyone. I would like to remind everybody that our meetings are web-streamed and televised. And for those of you in attendance, if you could please place your phones on silent mode. I'll now call the meeting to order. Approval of the agenda changes to the agenda. We do have two verbal closed-session items that staff are requesting be added to the agenda. The first is in relation to an unsolicited land sale purchase offer. And the other is in regards to a labor relations matter about an identifiable individuals. My understanding is Counselor Michele, you also are requesting the addition of the Norfolk Historical Society letter as one of the items of communications that will be added as item 6C. Are there any further changes? Counselor Huffman?
Just that the closed-session item 14C, it's potential land sale, it says word 6, it's actually word 7.
Okay. I didn't even know it was listed here, that matter.
My apologies. I was just going by the map that was attached, so that might have been from another file.
Oh, I see, on the printed copy, yes. Okay, and are there any other change? Counselor Van Passen?
Just that page 88 of the agenda, I do believe should be page 74.
Page 88 should be 74, we'll note that correction. Any further changes? Okay, if I could have a mover and a seconder that the agenda be approved with the amendments. Counselor Taylor, seconded by Counselor Roberts, all those in favor? That's carried. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? Seeing none. Communications, we have two items of correspondence. The first is the communication from Joe Yakobowski regarding questions for Norfolk County Council on COVID-19. Is there any discussion on the letter from Joe? Okay, it looks like Counselor Van Passen has moved that, if I could have a seconder. Counselor Roberts, all those in favor? That's carried. Next item is from Dennis Travalli, Police Services Board Community Safety and Well-Being Plan. Is there any discussion from Mr. Travalli? Go ahead, Counselor Columbus.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and as a representative of the Police Services Board, this motion was passed at that particular meeting, September 22nd. And at one time, the Community Safety Plan was to be done by January 1st, 2021, which is impossible to do. So it was suggested by the Police Services Board that we move it to no later than 2021. And rather than just let this be received as information, I think we do have to start putting some thought to this. And there was $60,000 put into the budget, I believe that was the 2020 budget.
I don't believe there was $60,000 that was put in at the time. What Mr. Burgess did was reallocated funds internally from our existing budget to be able to accommodate the need to do this. Thinking ahead.
Okay, that was the 2020 budget, was it?
Through the chair, yeah, that's correct, that was the current year budget we reallocated funds.
Right, so that, those funds won't be spent in 2020. But going into 2021...
Mr. Burgess, did you want to comment on that?
Yeah, we're running a deficit currently, so the 2020 funds are kind of evaporated at this point in time.
So to move this whole thing along, can we just ask direction of staff to move forward with it? To, to at least look into hiring a consultant if we don't have the staff to lead this particular project? There are other examples in the province where community safety plans have been done. One in Durham, I understand, and there's probably a couple others.
So I think in the letter that Mr. Burgess had provided with all of council, he indicated a couple of options for the Chair of the Police Services Board, including allowing OPP to begin the process. That didn't seem to suit the Chair, so perhaps Mr. Burgess would like to comment for the public on where staff is at with the Community Safety Plan because they are all well aware of the need to get done.
Sure, that'd be great, thank you. It was a motion passed by the Police Services Board and it's appropriate to bring it to council today.
Mr. Burgess, go ahead.
Sure, staff does have an RFP fairly close to go. This was approached by the OPP approach staff, I believe in February, March. We have worked on the RFP through COVID. We do have the RFP ready to go. The challenge for our side is, once you've selected the consultant, who would work with the consultant? We, you know, we have some significant resource constraints, so that's the challenge. And even selecting the consultant, who would be sitting on the evaluation panel and that kind of stuff? So, but staff is open, if council wants to redirect priorities, we can certainly try to accommodate that going forward.
And is there sort of a picking and choosing of priorities here that could be redirected, or how?
The biggest challenge is the two key components. This is kind of a triad group of the OPP, Public Health, and Social Services. Public Health team will be, has presented the Board of Health a request for 30 additional team members to support their planned activities next year. The team will be bringing back to a special meeting of the Board of Health with other options that can be viewed. Each of those options require certain tasks to be deleted from the work plan for Public Health, so if you add this into it, it would require further deletions from the Public Health's work plan. So council can take a look at it at that point in time. The other significant issue we have is Social Services. The provincial government has announced a fairly significant provincial reorganization of Social Services. And we're still trying to figure out exactly how that's going to impact our department and staffing at this point in time. So two of the major departments, you know, have some significant challenges ahead of them. So we can, you know, I haven't had time to circle back with staff, to be quite frank, on the June 2021 timeline. And my challenge is, is that I don't see, I really don't see a break in Public Health until potentially May. So completing a task by June would be kind of out of the question. So I think it's something council can direct as they see fit. And I can go back and circle the team. What I would say is this, this wasn't in our planning in 2020, it wasn't in our budget in 2020. We were reallocating resources, both monetary and human resources, prior to COVID. And when COVID hit, then this just, this got deleted, or essentially dropped from the planning. So, you know, we can add it back into the planning, but it will mean something else comes off the to-do list at that point in time.
Oh, Madam Mayor, what I'm hearing is, and I realize that Health and Social Services is absolutely strained and it was not in the budget. I just, I saw it in, you worked it in there somehow, so I noticed there was some money set aside at one time. So I just wondered, can we maybe just put this on the back burner till, say, January for further discussion at budget time?
I think that makes sense. I mean, staffer, I mean, it is a legislative requirement and staff are acutely aware of it.
Can we, can we, Mr. Burgess, can we move it to January budget discussion time? Maybe raise it and discuss again, and maybe by then we'll have a vaccine for COVID and things will slow down.
Sorry, the intent is to include it in the budget, my bigger concern, I'm less concerned about the $60,000. I'm more concerned about who we get to. Like, in theory, I can hire a third-party consultant, get some report that we can put on the shelf, and tick the box to say we completed it. I just don't know if that's good value for us if we don't have the staff to actually participate in the process. And that's something maybe we need to take a look at. Do we, do we just, for regulatory purposes, tick the box on this one and move on? But it's a good discussion for the budget time.
And perhaps the province may say you don't have to have it till 2022, you know, I don't know.
I think everybody's realizing their Health and Social Services resources are depleted on other tasks, with daycares opening at the same time as schools, et cetera, et cetera. So, and we also obviously have the challenge of the bunkhouse inspections here as well. One of the things we had talked about before is also looking, Jason, I don't know if there's any even further discussion with Haldeman, maybe something for a future conversation, but of doing a joint plan with them as well. That had been something that had been talked about, and at least sharing the costs then in that manner.
That's correct, because it's the same staff working on it.
Counselor Van Passen?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, that was going to be my comment. If I could amend my motion that we receive it as information, but add a line that adequate resource, financial resources be included in the 2021 budget.
Counselor Huffman?
Thank you, Mayor Chopp. I just wanted to mention that on my very first, and I think last, PSB meeting, which would have been two years ago in January, this was brought forth at that meeting. So we had over a year and two months prior to COVID. And I'm just wondering why nothing happened during that time with this, with this required legislation.
I think everybody had a target date in mind, which is why the government has extended the deadline for all municipalities and not just Haldeman and Norfolk.
But nothing happened in a year?
I would suggest maybe picking up the phone and calling Marlene, perhaps she can provide some background. Anything further? Counselor Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Chopp. I wondered if through you I could ask a question to Mr. Burgess. You mentioned that if the OPP were to begin on it, what would that, what does that look like versus just totally waiting and, and doing it from a, from a proper perspective, I guess, for lack of better words?
The suggestion is to, we have the, we have the, we have the RFP. We could just give them the RFP, they can run their own procurement process for it. Be the procurement lead, be the evaluation body for the selection of the consultant, and be the project manager where they would collect the data from the different departments. Because we would internally have to resource a project manager from one of the two departments that are pretty significantly strained at this point in time. So the intent was for OPP to lead this. Instead of them being a partner on the project, they would be the leader of the project and the two departments would partner with the OPP for this round of items. So it's project management and procurement, that would take some pressure off the front end of the process. We would still have challenges with, you know, the backend and having enough time. But if there was a desire to expedite this, that was the suggestion I gave to the Board Chair.
Thank you, through you. You know, my two cents, the way that I see, I see this and the way that I'm receiving this information is we are really overtaxing our police services in the types of calls that they're responding to, whether it be a barking dog, a false alarm, or providing what is really a social service. They're trying to communicate to us that they too are resource poor and they're looking for some help. They're looking for a partner. So I think it is entirely appropriate for our Health and Social Services team to be provided an opportunity to respond. I feel that we're not taking advantage of many of the advisory committees that we do have. This would be a great topic to refer to our Health and Social Services Advisory Board, especially if we're thinking about partnering with Haldeman. We should be engaging with their council to see their viewpoint on how we could potentially collaborate and share resources to address this gap that we have in our community. So, you know, I would, I would like to also have that discussion at that advisory level to engage with our counterparts in Haldeman and to continue the conversation. I really would like to hear from our homelessness team as well. We've had some beginnings of some conversations with regards to the plight of downtown Simcoe and those that are living in marginalized communities. And we've had some discussion, we have sort of a round table to try to address some concerns that may be Simcoe-specific, but really they apply to our entire community. So this would also be a good subject to broach when we're having those conversations at that level, at that, that crisis table. To develop a community wellness, safety plan, that's not only going to have a positive impact for Simcoe, but for all of our communities in Hamlets here in Norfolk County. Because we're all experiencing different levels of homelessness, substance abuse, and addictions. And, you know, putting this conversation off for a year because we've got a deadline for 2021, I would agree with my colleague, Counselor Huffman, that that's not adequate, that our community deserves more, and we deserve more from, from those that are knowledgeable about the subject and have something to offer. We need to engage with them. So we can't just shelve this for another day. Realizing there's a budget value attached to it, it's entirely appropriate to discuss it at our budget meeting. But we have other resources available to us as well, such as the advisory level and such as that crisis table that is newly instituted, trying to address some issues in downtown Simcoe. So those are my two cents. I'd like to see this subject discussed at both of those tables, please.
You do sit on the advisory committee, do you not, Counselor Roberts?
I could, and I intend to bring it up at our next meeting. But I wanted to just put it out there in the mayloo so it doesn't come as a surprise and I can work with the Chair of that advisory committee to get it on the agenda.
As a council representative on the advisory committee, I think that's a great idea for you. So the motion that I have is that the communications from Dennis Travalli, Chair of the Norfolk County Police Services Board regarding the Community Safety and Well-Being Plan be received as information, but, and adequate financial resources be included in the 2021 budget. Mover and seconder, Counselor Columbus and Counselor Van Passen? Any further discussion? All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. The next item, 6C, Counselor Michele, or with the communications from the Norfolk Historical Society. Do you want to provide some comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I, I just wanted to...
Yes, I, I, I just want to point out to my colleagues that while the COVID-19 has been ongoing for some time now, there have been several constituents and residents of the county who have been wondering when we will be able to open our museums and our archives to the public. And as the letter that you have received from the Norfolk Historical Society, which I, I think is also reflective of the comments about some of our other museums and art galleries that are in Norfolk County, that it may be time. I know that we have had some restrictions because of some staffing issues and redeployment of staff to other facilities, but it is, it is pretty apparent that social distancing is quite possible in our museums. They, they are not places where we see huge crowds of people and many of them do have large floor spaces. So I think, I think the first question, and with respect, Madam Mayor, through you, I'll maybe ask our CAO, because I have periodically questioned him about the availability of our museums. So I'm just wondering if he could first answer that question about when might be a reasonable timeframe to expect them to be opened?
Through the mayor to you, council. Currently, it's management's plan not to open museums until the first quarter of 2021. The reason behind that is, is driven by staffing at this point in time. We have staff allocated from museums to our, to our inventory control position and also to our long-term care facility. And what we are planning to do is open up likely one museum in Q1 of 2021 and, you know, see it from, see it from that, see it from there. One of the things that we will likely have to do in this budget process is potentially expand the number of FTEs that we normally have. And that's going to be a question for council. The inventory control situation of PPE is not going to go away. We have kind of weekly reporting to the province. And to reduce costs and to maintain tight control of it, we've actually put in centralized inventory controls. And our archivist, who's actually quite, by his training, is very good at his job. He's very well organized and he has good control measures. And he's our, essentially, our, our inventory control person. So if we move him back to his position, we'd still require that position. Same with anyone that we pull out of Norview Lodge. So the challenge that we have is, are we going to look to increase our staffing for that? And we thought that's appropriate for the budget process to go through this year and have council decide on that for 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. I also just want to add the question that, that is outlined in the letter regarding the, the question about whether or not there has been funding from the Department of Canadian Heritage Museum Assistance Program during COVID as an emergency support fund. Have we, Mr. Burgess, received that funding?
Through the mayor to the council, yes, we have. And our director of museums is actually looking, is going back to the federal government to see how, what potential different uses we can have for that fund, because we may want to consider during this budget process for next year, a strategic plan for museums and whether we can use that funding for the strategic plan. So we're, we're, we're having some questions back to the ministry to see what other uses we might be able to use for that, that particular fund.
Thank you, Jason. And in the event that we get some positive information from that source, would that have any impact on the timing of the possible opening of the museums?
I, we would still schedule it for Q1 of, unless directed otherwise by council. It's our plan to open it up in the first quarter of 2021.
Thank you.
I have a motion that the correspondence of Michelle Grant respecting museums reopenings be received as information. Moved by Counselor Michelli, seconded by Counselor Taylor. All those in favor? That's carried. Okay, moving on to approvals of minutes. First item is the council opening and closing minutes of September 22, 2020. Any errors or omissions? Okay, seeing none, they will be considered adopted and signed by the mayor and clerk. Moving on to reports of committees. Item A, council and committee minutes, October 13, 2020. October 13, CIC minutes are before you. No item has been pulled for discussion. So unless there's any errors or omissions, Counselor Columbus?
Madam Mayor, I spoke to the clerk earlier about this before the meeting. I just wanted to speak about recommendation number nine, that report CAO 2023 respecting realignment of organizational structure be received as information. Just to make note that I do believe that we will be discussing that in much greater detail, because it is a $700,000 expenditure, I believe, at the capital budget.
That wasn't the, that was the project domus report, not the reorgan, not the reorganization. And it was noted in there that it was coming forward to the capital budget.
Yeah, I see it's, they're both rolled into one recommendation, though. Recommendation A.
If you go under the project, don't...
Oh, A, right, okay.
So it's indicated right in there that it still needs to go to the capital budget.
So we will be having further discussion on that. Thank you very much.
Okay, so a mover and a seconder. Counselor Taylor, seconded by Counselor Michelli. All those in favor? And that's carried. Okay, next are the minutes of the Public Hearings Committee, October 6, 2020. Any errors or omissions? Okay, seeing none, I see that's been moved by Counselor Columbus and seconded by Counselor Martin. All those in favor? That's carried. Next one, Budget Committee Minutes, October 13, 2020. No item's been pulled for discussion. Any errors or omissions? It's been moved by Counselor Martin, seconded by Counselor Columbus, that the Budget Committee Minutes of October 13, 2020 be approved. All those in favor? That's carried. Telecommunication Advisory Committee Minutes, September 24, 2020, be received as information. It's been moved by Counselor Columbus, seconded by Counselor Martin. Any discussion on that? All those in favor? Carried. Next one, the Climate Change Adaptation Committee Minutes of September 11, 2020. Be received as information. Moved by Counselor Columbus, seconded by Counselor Van Passen. Any discussion? All those in favor? And that's carried. Next is the Norfolk County Energy Conservation Committee Minutes of September 11, 2020. Be received as information. Moved by Counselor Columbus and seconded by Counselor Van Passen. All those in favor? That's carried. And moved by Counselor Columbus, seconded by Counselor Van Passen, that the Agricultural Advisory Committee Minutes of October 8, 2020 be received as information. Any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor? And that's carried. First staff report is PD 20-63. This is an application that's been received to draft plan, approve a 32-lot residential subdivision. Each lot would permit a single detached dwelling. The draft plan of subdivision application is being reviewed concurrently with a zoning bylaw amendment application to change the zoning of the subject lands from general industrial to urban residential type 1. And Agent J-H Kahoon Engineering have put forth the application affecting the lands legally described as Part 28 Plan 19B in the urban area of Waterford. And Brandon, I'm not sure who's presenting, but you guys can go ahead.
Yeah, we have Mohammed here to just briefly wrap up this item. Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair. To Madam Chair to the council, this report, PD 2063, is being presented to the council with recommendation. The initial report for information was presented to the council on September 8, 2020. There is no major changes happened after the public hearing. The only change was made to the subdivision plan is reducing the size of Lot 52, Lot 19 to keep these lots away from the hazard land. No public input has been received for this application. We have prepared a series of conditions which will be required to satisfy before a final plan of subdivision may be approved for registration. A development agreement would be registered on title with these conditions. The proposed development is consistent with Provincial Policy Statement 2020 and conforms to the intent of official plan. Therefore, the report, PD 2063, is being presented to the council with recommendations that the proposed zoning by the MND application be approved subject to a holding provision for reasons set out in the report, and the draft plan of subdivision application be approved with conditions as set out in the report. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions from counselors? I have a, just a quick question. Could you explain a little bit what happens in this process when you move the very limited industrial land that we actually have in Norfolk County over to residential?
Madam Chair, if you can elaborate a little bit about the question. Are you talking about the, the subject property or any adjacent properties?
Yeah, so we're proposing at the same time of, of, they're filing this in conjunction with an application to change the zoning from urban or from general industrial to urban residential, correct?
Correct. So now...
So to add additional industrial lands is, can be challenging for a municipality, can it not?
Yeah, to, to the mayor, it's a, it is an important question in terms of our industrial land supply. Oftentimes, these are addressed and identified at the official plan stage. So when the municipality and the county goes through and does a comprehensive review of all of our, our land types and industrial land, it's important then, when doing the official plan about the industrial land designations. And in this case of this subject land, it was already changed to an urban residential designation, I believe. And therefore, that, that kind of decision was already made, that we would have had enough industrial land that was designated and zoned. So this, the decision's kind of already been made on this particular one, and so therefore the rezoning is part of the subdivision is a natural process. It is a good question to ask again, and it's probably good in the context of moving forward. Do we have enough industrial land? So that's something that we're endeavoring to, we look at as part of an upcoming work program starting next year, to start another planning review.
Counselor Michelli.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to add to your questions of staff, I noticed in the report with regard to the subjects' lands that were general industrial originally, and it indicates in the report that the, that designation was probably because of its historical official plan designation. I, I just, generally speaking, I always get a little bit anxious when I hear the word "probably." Is there no way to actually verify that that was the case?
So, Madam Chair, we actually looked at the previous histories. We did not find any evidence of any industrial activities in this land. Up to, I mean, we actually saw the activities on this land, I mean, if we go back until 1964. So we did not see any activities from then. So that's why we, we mentioned that probably it did not have any similar kind of activities as industrial. It seems to be, to the mayor, through the mayor, it seems to be available area transition. And there is a parcel of land across the street that also is transitioned and allows for residential uses, but there is still some industrial nearby.
Counselor Van Passen.
And thank you, Madam Mayor. I do believe that is the situation, where it's just historically been the industrial land. Back in the day, when there was mills there, there was rail lines running through there. The co-op used to be there. There was a need for that portion of the town of Waterford to have that industrial land close to the rails. But things have changed and the residential area of Waterford is growing in leaps and bounds, and I think the industrial areas of Waterford are shifting farther south. And, no, I, you know, I noticed the change is required, but I think it's a good change. It's probably not the best land in the current situation for industry because of its proximity to the, the water and the parkland that's surrounding that. But back in the day, you wanted to be right next to the rail lines, but they're not there anymore.
Wasn't so much directed at this. It was more of a comment to get thinking about the future, since we do have very limited industrial land in Norfolk County. And we probably could have used a little bit more discretion on how that had been used up in the past. Counselor Columbus.
Madam Mayor, yes, I was thinking about that same question. This is five acres, this particular property. And I believe there was an eight-acre site in Delhi that was just changed over. It was where Delhi Solak was, from industrial over to residential. So there's over 10 acres already that have disappeared as industrial. So I do believe that there's going to be a application coming forward to take some land out of agriculture and switch it to industrial in the near future. So hopefully municipal affairs won't stymie us this time on that. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Columbus. Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Chopp. Through you to any member of staff, a bit of a hypothetical question, but something I don't have an answer to and am dealing with in my community. When an individual comes forward at the draft plan stage, what checks and balances does your department have should they sell the land and then another individual come forward with a draft plan on top of the original draft plan? What do we do to ensure there's alignment and things aren't being misplaced or forgotten about, or lines and water mains are, are in the appropriate spots? Does this happen often? Do we usually catch most of them?
Through the chair, it's Tricia here. The main check is that the draft plan of subdivision is registered on title of the property. So, but it doesn't go with the owner. It's registered on title of the property. So the new, the new owner would be subject to the same conditions as outlined. And at such time that they chose to or applied to change the, that draft plan of subdivision, there is a process in place that they have to apply through and to get appropriate permissions. And at that point in time, the agreement may be opened and amended as appropriate. So that it's, it's registered right on the title of the property and stays on the property.
Further questions? Okay, if I could, actually, I might have it signed already. The staff recommendation as printed was moved by Counselor Columbus and seconded by Counselor Van Passen. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Next item, staff report, PW 20-50, it's regards to engineering fees on the Long Point-Cosway Bridge. And Mr. Gobby is going to begin. As a heads up before council, before we move the staff recommendation, there was some additional little information that just came forward from staff that will also be presented to council in November. So one of the decisions we'll make, it may be prudent to defer this until all information is received at the subsequent council meeting. Go ahead, Mr. Gobby. Oh, there you are. Sorry, I thought you were standing in the back.
Through the chair to council, the report you have in front of you here is PW 20-50. It is with regards to some additional engineering fees that we have over and above what council has previously awarded to Parsons Engineering relating to the Long Point-Cosway Bridge. Essentially, what we've hap, what has happened here is when the original engineering work was awarded to Parsons, there was two identified budgets, one being the budget for the road design, one being the budget for the bridge design, which we had established an upset limit in each of those that would be able for... limit in each of those that would be able for Parsons to use for said work. As we've been going through this process and dealing with the 14 different environmental agent or environmental permits through, I think, six different agencies, there's been additional work required to be undertaken by Parsons relating to environmental offsetting, additional surveys, and baseline monitoring that needs to be done in order to satisfy conditions of permits for the approval side of this project. What we have found is that that work was not originally scoped in any of the the original worker award that that went out to Parsons. So essentially, what we're looking at here is a transfer of some of the engineering funds from the road portion of the the road engineering design portion of this project to cover off some of these other unanticipated costs that were relating to the bridge engineering Without getting into an extensive amount of other dealings here of me me rambling on, if you have any specific questions with regards to that, I guess I'm just looking at this, we're kind of the the plan is with the the road design, and there's a comment in the report that due to some of these environmental permits that have been required and some of that additional work, we may never get the permits in place, or they would be extremely difficult to get some permits to do the full road reconstruction as was previously hoped. So from an overall project scope, it's, to put it simply, it's kind of the bridge and the complexity of that is kind of eating up some of the the budget that we had originally had put away for the the roadworks. That being said, that we we do have some other ideas that Parsons is looking at and staff are looking at for alternative roadway improvements that could be done and be brought forward in the future. However, at this time, our primary focus is on the bridge.
Councillor Van Passen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So what you're really asking for is to transfer some of our budgeted amount for the road design over to the bridge design so we can actually get it done some point in time, because I think we're going to have to add a bit in the budget for a new sign. I think it's going to fall down soon, isn't it, Councillor Michelle? And then a report will be coming later to explain how we deal with the road and reassess that at that time. But is that the do I get the gist of it here?
Through the chair to Councillor Van Passen. Yes, that is essentially the gist of this situation.
Thank you.
Councillor Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Jason. So Jason, just maybe for members of the public who are watching, there would at this juncture then, if this this were to be our course of action, it would not be possible to make any real specific suggestions or or observations about what might be the sort of the end result of the type of road construction we'd be able to do. Is that correct? Because now if we're going to basically do some kind of a, I'll use the term simply scaled-down version of the Causeway roadway, it wouldn't be possible at this point to to kind of itemize, you know, what the details of that would be. Is that correct?
Through the chair to Councillor Michelle, that is correct. At this time, we have essentially asked Parsons to put the brakes on the road design, knowing that we've had some of these challenges with getting some approvals. So they're they've basically shelved that aspect of the project at this point so we can focus on the bridge. That being said, when we get back into conversations about what can we now do with the road, once we once we have the permits in place and finalized for the bridge, we'll have a lot better context of what some of these expectations of some of the other agencies are for permits, and we can kind of extrapolate that out along that that entire roadway. So we could come back with a, you know, a best estimate that if we did want to continue to proceed with a full road reconstruction as was originally envisioned, that, you know, this is the the magnitude of of that impact and what we'd be looking at for at least a ballpark cost. The same time, we would come back with alternatives to say, you know, we can avoid some of these potential, not pitfalls, but delay factors or other risks or complications by altering the design to do this in hopes that it'll still ultimately serve the needs of the community.
Thank you, Jason. And with that in mind, then, it is conceivable, and again, I realize it's impossible to say with any kind of certainty, but it is conceivable that perhaps some some additional savings could be generated during the roadway construction itself as a result of this. Is that correct?
Through the chair to Councillor Michelle, that is correct. That is at least staff's hope at this point.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. And I just want to mention that that our county staff, including Mr. Godby and and Parsons staff, have been working very hard at trying to expedite all of the permitting required, which is the, you know, the big issue that we always have with any kind of construction work in Long Point and on the Causeway. And so I just want to commend both our own staff and and the Parsons staff for the tremendous efforts that they have been making, trying their best to to expedite this project. Again, as we kind of know, this is a is a very complex project that has a lot of moving parts, and we, our staff and Parsons, and I think everyone involved, continue to do the best that they can to move that forward.
Mr. Godby, were there any blatant engineering mistakes made to raise the cost to where it is with respect to, you know, the engineering and the design of this bridge? Or is it just total environmental bureaucracy that's creating some of these issues?
Through the chair to Councillor Columbus, I guess I would I would say that through staff's review of all the work that's been done to date, I wouldn't say that there's any, you know, engineering lapses or or other oversights that have happened through the time. It's hard to blame just environmental bureaucracy either. I mean, the it is in a wild world biosphere reserve. Some of the the unknowns that have come out, you know, as relates to species at risk and the number of species there, that 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 information had not been gathered until we were, you know, through this process and actually with boots on the ground and, for the lack of a better description, you know, playing in the swamp to see what's actually there. So it it's a it's a hard thing to to put one single finger on, because as Councillor Michelle had kind of referenced already, there's just so many different things here when we talk about aquatic species, terrestrial species, birds, and turtles, and snakes, and frogs, and everything under the sun, and fish. It's that pulls a lot of different trigger points from a lot of different agencies, so that has definitely been a challenge. But I don't think we can attribute that all just to that process.
Thank you.
Thank you. And through you, many of my questions have been answered at this point, so I am glad to hear that the brakes have been put on the road design. But with that, you said that the engineers would be working on the alternatives. Is that did I mishear that? Or do we have the expertise on staff to work on the potential alternative road designs just to avoid those costs at the engineering firm?
Through the chair to Councillor Taylor, that it would kind of be a collaborative effort, just the the two projects when they were initiated were initially linked, and the reason that linkage was made was in hopes of the the synergy of having one project designed, you know, for the full road and bridge so that the engineering works would seamlessly fit together. With that in mind, there was a quite extensive amount of preliminary road engineering that was done. So a lot of that information can be used by county staff in consultation with or with some minor questioning of of the consulting engineer.
Further questions from council? Any comments, Jason or Jason, in terms of the additional information to come forward and whether it's preferable to wait?
The two Jasons are doing the Mexican standoff, so you'd speak first. I'll start it, and Mr. Godby can correct me or add anything if I'm if I'm incorrect. There is a report scheduled on the procurement matter for the tender for the Causeway Bridge for next cycle. There is a legal opinion going to be provided to council on that. As such, we think that one of the options council may consider, so before they approve an engineering budgetary shift in the budget here, that they may also want to understand some of the construction cost changes that might occur and some of the other issues related to it. What we don't want to do is not be transparent with council and have this one report, you make a decision on this, and the next cycle, you get another report, and you say, well, you know, how come they couldn't come together? It just they couldn't come together because of legal opinions and a whole bunch of other stuff that was going on. So Mr. Godby has said that because this is just a reallocation of some engineering dollars, and it's not a time-sensitive matter that he could wait potentially a few weeks, it could be council's option to choose to defer this report till the next cycle when you have the tender report with legal opinion at the same time. And then you have a bit more of a complete picture with the project as a whole and some of the challenges that we're facing on the project.
Did I capture that okay, Mr. Godby?
Councillor Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, in light of of the information that we've received from from both staff members, I would move to defer this motion.
Seconded. All those in favor? And that's carried. Next report is staff report 20-33 from Corporate Services Drain Construction Financial and Project Staff's update.
Thank you, Mayor Chop. Guys, good afternoon, Mayor Chop and members of council. Back in January of 2020, report FS 20-12 was submitted to council to approve to bill out a group of 28 drain construction projects which were identified as round one. Subsequently, the bills were sent out, and a number of questions prompted the need for staff to conduct an additional review of each of the drain files. At a special meeting of council on April the 7th, 2020, council directed that the billing be ceased, the bills were rescinded, and staff undertook a detailed review of each drain noted in the round one group. The result of staff's review is detailed in report CS 23-3, which is before you this afternoon. During this review, four drains were found to require substantial revision. They include DeCue Road Drain, John John Boulevard Drain, the Prescott Reassessment, and the Vaughn Drain. Details on each of these changes are included in the report as well as being summarized in Appendix A. Appendix A also includes very minor revisions to the Cooper, RJ, Smith, and Vinator Drains. Attachment B to the report includes a sample letter which will accompany the bills that are being sent to property owners to explain the available payment options and to provide contact information to enable the recipients to access the information that they need. And with that, I welcome any questions that council may have.
Any questions for Ms. Fanning? Councillor Van Passen.
Just one question, well, point, I'd like to pull one of those out of that appendix and deal with it separately.
And sorry?
The list that we're dealing with on page 85. I want to pull the Six Concession DeBourgh petition out of that list and deal with that one separately.
Any further questions from councillors? In that case, then, on the balance of the report, does somebody wish to move the staff recommendation or propose an alternative? Staff recommendation moved by Councillor Rabbits, seconded by Councillor Taylor. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor? That's carried. And Councillor Van Passen, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Done some homework on this particular drain and talked to the applicant, the petitioner in the first place. It was a $50,000 job that had about a $30,000 cost overrun. And my reading of the staff report, the engineer report, talking to the one of the petitioners, I would suggest that the majority, if not all, of that cost overrun was due to errors, omissions, lack of oversight on behalf of the county. And I don't feel it's right that we should stick the individual with the extra bill when it was the county's fault for the cost overruns. So I would ask that we refer this one back to staff and discuss the matter a little bit more, because I would hate to see some legal action be taken against the county that's going to cost us a heck of a lot more than reassessing maybe our portion of the fault and the extra cost overrun. So if we could refer it back to staff and have it bring brought forth at a later date, maybe with some amendments on the the costings.
Councillor Columbus.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I too received several phone calls from Mr. DeBourgh explaining this. He asked to come to council to do a deputation. I spoke with the clerk, and apparently it wasn't in order for him to be able to do that. So the best thing that the clerk advised me to do was to have him write out all the details, and he wrote out four lengthy pages with respect to what happened with that drain. So I would concur with Councillor Van Passen that the four pages, I don't know where they are, I thought they perhaps would be distributed to council at some time. But I do believe the clerk's office has them. They're just not part of this report.
Certainly, they they can be. They were submitted with a deputation request, but I have no problem, we'll put them in the next infopack.
Okay, so I would concur with the Councillor Van Passen to defer this item, looking for more information with respect to the applicant's submission.
Okay, so that's seconded. All those in favor? If it's a question, go ahead, and if there's no debate on the deferral, so.
Understood. My question is, I remember early in our term, we actually had an engineer present, opened up a meeting under the Drainage Act, and there was an opportunity for those that had questions about their drainage concerns to direct them towards a subject matter expert. If we could, would we be able to replicate that process and get that feedback from the expert, just to get the timelines? I'm hearing it hearsay secondhand from the affected property owners, but I'd love to have our engineering team, whether it's their fault specifically or just explaining how this came to pass. I found that earlier meeting that we had really beneficial when we had that subject matter expert present to answer those difficult questions. Would that be possible?
Through the chair, I think if the matter is deferred, we would bring back a subsequent report with our drain group to provide both the applicant's position and Norfolk County's position, and then council could make a decision on on that one item. Madam Mayor, if it's okay, I just have a technical question of the clerk. Clerk, if if the one item is deferred, do we have to on the fly make a change to the bylaw that is also being attached because it refers to Appendix A? So if we pull it if we pull it out, I just want to make sure we have a bylaw that's in effect that we can do the billing on that.
Through you, Mayor Chop, certainly to finance whether or not there is $1 amount in bylaw 2020-84, do they have a revised dollar amount? And if not, we will have to withdraw the bylaw from today's agenda. So that bylaw will have to be amended to $2,556,454 and 40 noncents. That is the effect of of this decision, and we'll write that in right now.
Okay. Anything further, Counselor Van Passen?
Just, I think I used the word referred to staff, not defer the thing. Subtle difference in our procedural bylaw.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, I would just defer the billing is what I meant, and then we'd bring a report back to council. So we take that one item out of the billing, proceed with all the rest of the billings, and then we'd bring that billing matter back for subsequent discussion.
Okay. All those in favor? That's carried. And let's take a 10-minute break, 4:15. We'll start again with the bylaws and motions and going to close session. I hear him. All right, moving on to bylaws. I have a motion before me on the bylaws, moved by Counselor Michelle, seconded by Counselor Van Passen. That bylaw 2020-83 to bylaw 2020-87 includes the bylaw 22Z 2020 and bylaw 21Z 2020 be approved, signed by the mayor and clerk and affixed with the corporate seal. And of course, that includes the amendment to bylaw 20-84 that was discussed earlier. Any discussion on that? All those in favor? And that's carried. Okay, next, Counselor Martin, I understand that you have a motion to bring forward on the Simcoe seals.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Chopp. As we know, we've gone through some hurdles and hiccups with recreation, as many other communities have, but I have learned that I think some teams are at more of a disadvantage than others. And in some correspondence with the Simcoe seals and Shirley Shaw, her comments are that, you know, their user fees are up 43%. There's been some extra media attention on the seals in particular, which actually turned out quite favorably for Ms. Shaw because she's had some funding offers come through to her, which is fabulous. I don't think it's a business to council to meddle in that, but I do think it's a business to council to not only look after vulnerable community members, but actually prioritize them in a pandemic. And long after any funding that Shirley may or may not receive comes and goes, the fundamental issue is still going to remain that the Simcoe seals are now priced out of our pool. Other community members are able to pass these on, these increased rates on to their family members, and unfortunately for the Simcoe seals, a lot of them are living on about $1,500 a month, and they don't have the ability to pay more. And so with the additional funding that Shirley may be receiving, she's in the application phase, although it looks promising, she is deciding whether or not the donation they accept should be used to subsidize 18 swimmers out of a team of 40 for an extra three months or an extra six months. And I believe that all 40 swimmers should be back in the pool and that this team shouldn't really be treated as every other team is. It should be prioritized and given a certain assuredly from this council that we will be there for them. So the motion reads, you know, that we would give them some funding until the end of the year and flexibility should they not receive a grant. But it also asks that we give consideration to holding their user fee rates at the 2019 rate so that they can plan for the future, they can ask for this funding accordingly and make the next steps. So that is my motion. Thank you, Mayor Chopp.
Thank you, Counselor Martin. If you would indulge me before I get a seconder, I'm going to pass the chair to Counselor Rabbits, and I was wondering if I might be able to provide some additional information on this matter.
Okay. With that, I'll assume the chair. So we do have a motion that has been presented. Do we have a seconder for this motion? Seeing Counselor Huffman. We can move forward to discussion. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Again, I was hoping before a seconder that I might be able to have a chance to provide council with some additional information on this issue. And hopefully, I was hoping that you might indulge me after I provide you this information to move a new motion. So I'll read this as follows, and then we can go from there, what I've put down. I'm not sure how well council recalls this, but certainly there was information that had been provided. But thanks to Mr. Burgess and Heidi Van Dyke and Louise Lovell in our homelessness prevention program, a new partnership this year has been created between Norfolk County and our local United Way. What that meant for us was now that there was no longer two organizations issuing funding, there is now one application process in Haldeman and Norfolk, and both pools of money have been combined so that there is no longer duplication of funding that is being issued. The benefits of that, of course, are that now we are able to meet more demand in our community and help more people than we did previously. In a phone call with the United Way, I learned so far, they have granted out more than $520,000, I believe, since COVID in the Haldeman Norfolk community, and another $110,000 is there to be allocated by the end of next month from different pockets of funding, which is amazing for our local community. This is an example of a great partnership that has been created at the hands of RCAO and the United Way. It's regrettable that it hadn't been done previously. As a result of Mr. Burgess, it was the Simcoe seals were put in touch with the United Way, and it is my understanding that they have submitted an application for $20,000 in funding. It is also my understanding that the crux of this motion is that the Simcoe seals need approximately three months or $1,350 to tie them over until such time as the United Way approves their application for funding. Anything to do, obviously, with the Special Olympics is laudable. We have many organizations and many people in this community that can use that. and many people in this community that can use that support. The challenge that I have is that the taxpayers already subsidize recreational programming to the tune of millions of dollars. That subsidy is being paid by the wealthy, but it is also being paid by many members of our community that are unable to meet their basic needs. As our taxes rise, their ability to pay for those basic needs diminishes. Millions of dollars in uncollected accounts, drainage, recreational donations that were supposed to occur to projects but were not. Mr. Burgess and our community staff, despite comments in the public, of which I have seen no support from council to defend, are not here to ruin recreation in Norfolk County. What I thought we brought Mr. Burgess on to do was to show us the way to do things differently. Not everything has to go on the backs of the taxpayers, and we cannot continue to operate with that mentality. So I would like to propose changing the motion and keeping with its intent, which I believe, again, was to provide the Simcoe seals with the funding of $1,350 until such time as this new source, the United Way, is able to approve their application. If the application is not approved, although I don't believe that will happen, then we can return to this discussion. So instead of relying on the taxpayers of Norfolk County to support an amazing cause such as this, Mr. Burgess has personally donated 500 of the $1,350. I followed suit, and I also personally donated 500 to the Simcoe seals. That leaves the remaining $350 to provide them with three months to determine whether or not they qualify for the balance of the $20,000 they have applied for. So my motion would read that my fellow counselors chip in the balance being asked for of $350, which divided by seven of you here today works out to an easy 50 bucks apiece. And let's show the taxpayers of Norfolk County, those people that have lost their businesses, that have lost their jobs, that this council is committed to doing business differently, and we aren't expecting them to open their pocketbooks for every last thing. In terms of the discussion with regards to user fees, I believe in conversations with staff, one of the options that is going to come forward this year is looking at charging more of a full cost recovery for our recreational facilities and then council, you know, providing that funding back to those organizations or those specific individuals that are in need that likely will have to be through an organization such as the United Way. But I believe that more information will be coming forward on that. So again, $1,000 of the $1,350 has been provided to the Simcoe seals. That leaves a balance of $350, and I would leave that to my councils, council members, to choose whether or not they'd like to fund the remaining $350.
Thank you for that, Mayor. Seeing as we do have a motion on the floor which has been seconded, do we have, you know, you're suggesting that we have an alternative motion to consider, but we do have to get through the business of what's been tabled. Did you want to propose an amendment, or would you like to, you know, if this motion isn't successful, you could also table your motion afterwards? What would be your preference?
I would assume if the motion was successful, that meant my counselors did not want to chip in the $50 to address the intent of the motion. So why don't we let the motion stand on the floor, and I can propose my motion then if the motion fails.
Understood. Your intentions are known. Do we have further discussion on the motion? Seeing Counselor Martin first, and then Counselor Huffman.
Actually, if Counselor Huffman wishes to speak, I've already spoken, that I can yield, otherwise, okay. Thank you, Chair Rabbits. I will be supporting my motion, and I would love to entertain the mayor's motion if it gets to that part of the debate. I have no issue contributing $50 to the Simcoe seals. I don't think that's what this issue is about. I think a lot of that information would have been helpful prior to the motion coming forward. And it's great, and it shows that we're invested. But there's a lot of other things that I think each and every other council member donates and contributes to in their own community as well. So I don't necessarily agree with the way that this is sprung on us. But I have no issues paying the $50 and supporting the seals. However, I do not believe that it fundamentally corrects the issue. When the funding is gone, Shirley is in a position where she's able to take this money and treat it as a fundraiser. And if that lasts her for a year or two years, fundamentally, the issue still stands that these increases are pricing her athletes out of the pool. And so I think that that's why the user fee discussion is a critical one to have. Do we want to be there to send a message suggesting that we will provide some level of assurity to the Simcoe seals regardless of their level of funding? Thank you.
Seeing Counselor Huffman.
My discussion point is that I take exception as to how this was brought forward. Again, I've spent my entire life donating my time to individuals from a marginalized population and continue to do so on a regular basis. So the implication that if I vote in favor of the motion that was originally put on the floor, that I don't want to contribute $50. And I would like to note that between the mayor and the CAO, there is a bit of a disparity between the wages that we make at this table.
Counselor Michelley, I saw your hand. Did you still wish to speak?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that's been mentioned already.
Recognizing Counselor Van Passen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question to the clerk. Can we split this motion into two parts? Because the first part deals with the immediate problem, and the second part, I believe, probably should be dealt with at budget time and when we deal with that. And I think I'd rather have it separated if that's possible.
It's always possible to separate items for voting purposes.
We've had a ruling from our clerk. It is possible. Which part of the question are you proposing to split?
The first part, that the monthly grant of $450 a month for October, November, December, and that the Simcoe seals are unsuccessful receiving funding for another organization, that the monthly grant payment is based on projected usage, that portion as one motion, and then as a separate motion dealing with the user fees for 2021 and moving forward, that they're split into two separate motions.
Procedurally, we've had a ruling that that is an order. I don't see any issue with it myself. We could debate each point sequentially. I did see a hand raised, however, by Counselor Michelley. I'd like to have an opportunity to speak to it, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'm going to raise the question I think I was going to ask before, and I thought had answered, but I need clarification. If we pass these motions, does that preclude any opportunity to entertain the mayor's motion that she put forward, or that I believe she would intend to put forward?
I believe that would be a question for our clerk to answer, but it may be a little bit too early to ask that procedural question, as we haven't actually approved anything at this juncture in time. So hold on to that question, and let's ask it, you know, should we have a need to, or should the mayor be tabling a subsequent motion after we get through this business before us? With that, just so we stay organized here, I wouldn't mind, Andy, if you could read out, you know, the division of the question. Let's go through that first portion that Counselor Van Passen has separated for us, and we can entertain more discussion regarding that portion of Counselor Martin's motion here.
All right, so stop me if I get this wrong. Norfolk County Council approve a monthly grant of up to 450 per month for October, November, and December of 2020 to the Simcoe seals Special Olympics team pending the following criteria are made. One, that the Simcoe seals are unsuccessful in receiving similar funding from another organization; and two, that the monthly grant payment is based upon projected pool usage by the Simcoe seals. Is that the first portion?
My understanding, yes. Is that correct, Counselor Van Passen? Is that, that's the division point? So again, we're on page 133 of our agenda. We have a motion before us. We're reviewing the first paragraph, I and II is what's for debate currently. Do we have further discussion from the floor? I'm seeing our CAO would like to offer staff's perspective.
Not so much staff's perspective. I just want to get clarification for the funding source is not identified in the motion. I think we need to identify the funding source. Secondly, if it's a one-time funding source, or if no other, if this is a one-time, like one-off type of thing, but this is, or is this something that council would want to continue to do in the future, allocating funding out at the council level versus, you know, either through a grant process system, which, you know, this council has used before? We would just need some clarity on that. And funding sources could be from the grant pool. It could also just be from the council strategic fund. But staff would need direction at a minimum of where the funding source is coming from.
Counselor Martin, would you be able to provide the intention for the funding source for this grant?
Thank you, Chair. I also was going to specify that I think it should say from United Way, similar funding from United Way, instead of another organization firstly. Secondly, I spoke with staff, and the suggestion was the grant, the council, the council grant fund.
Yeah, and just be, if it is the grant fund, and I may ask council to consider some wording in there, because, you know, if it's out of the grant fund, there's policies and procedures around how that grant fund gets approved, and it comes once a year to council, and there's an intake process for it. So you may want to tighten it up, because my concern is, once you approve one out of sequence or out of process, you may set a precedent that you may then have a whole bunch of other organizations that may seek similar relief. And maybe that is something council wants to do, and I'm not opposed to it. It just, I think it needs to have some clarity on that.
If it assists, I think it would be an order, and I will check with the mover, that the language include a one-time payment from the grant fund. Further, if the mover in second or wished for that to be discussed at the next grant approval process, if it is to be ongoing, I think that would be an order as well. I'll allow the mover to respond to the suggestion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To be honest, I feel as though, should we ever find ourselves in this situation, now we're telling a group that they can't, a vulnerable group, that they can't come to us and ask for help. If the language should include a one-time ask for 2020, I'd be fine with that. I don't think that we should be crossing off funding sources for our community members. It's not often that they come to us in this manner, and it's not often that we give consideration to them in this manner. However, I think that a lot of the time, we see funding requests for community centers, or luncheons, or rentals of rooms and halls. This is very different, in my opinion. This is a Special Olympics swimming team that will not be in the pool if we don't assist. So I'm happy putting, you know, a one-time ask on it for 2020 until the end of the year, but I don't want to, no, I don't want to tie their hands and tell them if they miss a window and council decides to increase user fees halfway through a year that they can't come to us.
All right, we've established where the funds would come from. I did want to see if our CAO understood the direction provided by the mover for the sources of that funding, and we'll open up the floor for further discussion, seeing Mayor Chop.
Thank you, Counselor Rabbits. Again, for future years, I know you've had a division of the question, but I think it's something that we really need to have a strong conversation at budget time about as, you know, we look at these financial challenges that we face. And we have to understand that, you know, we have many seniors in this community and many vulnerable individuals that, you know, right now, we're asking them to subsidize more and more, you know, these groups. And, you know, I do think the groups deserve to be subsidized, but they're also subsidizing those that can afford to pay the fees. And so I think one of the things we need to look at with our user fees is, and I believe staff is going to be coming forward with some suggestions to that end to council, is that as opposed to having this, you know, significant subsidy on our recreational programming, that what we do is we allocate a certain amount of funds every year, much larger grant pool of money than we've ever had previously, and we ensure that that money is given back to those vulnerable individuals and vulnerable groups that need it, so that the vulnerable population isn't subsidizing the wealthy portion of the population in Norfolk County. And, you know, again, if this motion is to pass, you're now putting $1,350 on to the bills of taxpayers, as opposed to when $1,000 has already been contributed to that end.
Is there further discussion from the floor, seeing Counselor Columbus?
Yes, my question is, do we have dollars in that grant program fund for this particular project?
Jason?
I believe we do. We haven't allocated any funds that would normally come to council, so we haven't done that at this point in time. So this one would essentially be a pre-approved application, I guess, outside the normal process.
Further discussion from the floor regarding the divided question we're currently debating? I'm seeing none. I, oh, Counselor Van Passen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The motion says a monthly grant of up to $450 a month. We've already got $1,000 of that accounted for. We've got 350 to go. If I was to write out a check for 350, withdraw the motion, or, no, okay. I'll still write out the check for 350, and that makes the requirement zero for Norfolk County, right?
Sounds like your friendly amendment was rejected by the original mover. You know, with that, we've had a request for a recorded vote, I believe I heard that, from Mayor Chop. And with that, I think I would like to call the question, unless there is further discussion from the floor. We're seeing Counselor Martin would like to speak.
Thank you, Chair Rabbits. I guess I would just clarify with my microphone on to Counselor Van Passen. Nope, I think that we can call that a good year of fundraising and some extra publicity to, I see he's pulling out his check, too. What a good man. A good year of fundraising for the Simcoe seals, and, but I still believe that we should be telling them that they're a priority and demonstrating that to them. And I think a lot of this United Way information and additional requests from council members would have been helpful prior to bringing the motion on the floor, but I look forward to the vote. Thank you.
With that, let's, I just want to make sure we didn't lose anyone. I saw the CAO has stepped out. So with that, unless we had any last-minute concerns that staff wanted to address, we're about to call the question. I'll allow our CAO to take his seat before it is called, seeing Counselor Columbus would like to speak.
Mr. Chair, what exactly is the motion on the floor right now?
We'll have it read by the clerk prior to having a recorded vote.
That Norfolk County Council approve of a one-time 2021 grant, monthly grant of up to $450 per month from the council's grant fund to others for October, November, and December of 2020 to the Simcoe seals Special Olympics team pending the following criteria are met, that the Simcoe seals are unsuccessful in receiving similar funding from the United Way, and that the monthly grant payment is based upon the projected pool usage by the Simcoe seals.
Point of clarification, Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Chair Rabbits. To Mr. Grisal, I believe you just read a one-time grant for 2021. I'd like the grant funding to come out of 2020. Should they want to reapply in 2021, they have the option to do so.
All right, so with the recorded vote, Counselor Taylor.
No.
Counselor Columbus.
Yes.
Counselor Van Passen.
No.
Counselor Huffman.
Yes.
Counselor Michelley.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Chop. Counselor Rabbits.
Yes.
Motion carries five to three.
Thank you for that. As Chair, you are able to comment after a vote has been taken, and I did want to take this opportunity just to remind council that we have had opportunities in the past where these one-time asks have come forward. I myself have been in favor of the Norfolk Curling Club here in Simcoe. I myself have been in favor of the Norfolk Curling Club here in Simcoe. I think the Delhi Travelers was another one that came for those one-time asks. And I understand we have policies and procedures, but there is times when we need to dig deep and we need to support a community organization. I'm glad that we've come together today and had some debate and decided to support the Seals. With that, we have more discussion about the future of this organization for 2021. And that seems to be the content of the rest of the motion, which we will now proceed to debate. So I understand that we have a mover, Counselor Martin and Counselor Huffman, for the rest of the motion. Since it has been divided, are there any amendments or points of clarification before we move forward to discussion? Counselor Martin?
Thank you, Chair Rabbits. I guess a point of clarification to build on your request would be, additionally, I did reach out to the hammerheads, and I asked them what their position was and what they thought of council subsidizing another team and not their team, as we keep having this discussion. And their, their comments were, please do what you can to help the Seals. We, we will make do with what we can, but this is a whole other level. So when we look at providing a special subsidy rate or a special user fee, no, that's not typical. But they're in support of that, because they understand the athletes who are not in the pool right now and who will no longer be able to be in the pool right now. So the second part of this motion, in my opinion, fundamentally addresses the issue, whether they have funding or not, whether the mayor and Mr. Burgess and, and other council members donate or not. This is a message to the Simcoe Seals saying, we will do what we can to ensure your programming survives. Thank you.
Okay, and with that, I think I'll just read the remainder of the motion, so we're all clear. Now we are debating in that staff be directed, create a separate fee schedule for the Simcoe Seals Special Olympic Team for the 2021 user fee schedule. And that the proposed 2021 user fees for the Simcoe Seals Special Olympics team be based upon the 2019 user fee rates paid by this group and be specifically exempted for any additional COVID-19-related user fee applied costs to other teams. And further, that county staff be directed to permit flexible payment options with the Simcoe Seals for the 2020 and 2021 season. I've added a few words in there for clarity. Is there any further discussion on the motion, seeing Counselor Van Passen and Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could I ask this be deferred to the budget deliver, 2021 budget deliberations, please?
You may, and deferral would take precedence over any debate. Do we have a seconder for that deferral? Seeing Mayor Chop, the motion has been deferred to the, I take it, the rate-supported budget? Maybe we could have a comment from, I'm seeing nodding heads from Jason Burgess.
That would be after the user fees are set for 2021.
Which budget are we discussing this, Jason?
Through the, through the chair, it's a reflection on both. You can, you can always change the user fee with another bylaw, so you can discuss it either at the user fee session or at the levy session, and we would then have to amend the rate bylaw at that point in time.
I would ask the mover of the deferral to specify when we are deferring this to.
During the overall budget deliberations, let's talk about the big picture, and it will come up at that point.
Sounds like operating to me. With that, there is no, is there a question? Counselor Taylor?
Through you. When are we going to be expecting that report to come forward with the options at the operating budget? Is that when we would be expecting that?
Through the chair, because it's a pretty extensive overhaul, it would be, it would be preferential to do it at the, at the rate budget. And it's, at the, the challenge with it is, is staff is going to present a number of different options on how to handle rate. And if we go with the one option with regards to targeting economic subsidies to those, it's going to force a creation of a fairly large pool, which overflows into the levy budget, and that's the challenge. If, so we can, you know, my, my assumption would be, when we discuss rates, there might be a deferral of some of the matters that we discuss into the, into the levy budget. So I would suggest that we will try to get the work done for the rate budget and then, or not, I keep on using rate, for the fee budget, scheduled fees, sorry, not to get confused with the water budget. But then, but, you know, there, there is a global picture with how much we're going to, the impact to the general levy when we undertake that, because it is a cost recovery on the, on the levy expenditures.
I'm just hoping that once we come back to it, we can at least come to a decision on a portion of it before we keep kicking things down the road. So that's just time and question. Thank you.
Thank you for that question, Counselor Taylor. I also use user fees and rate budget interchangeably. That's, didn't want to confuse anybody. So with that, we've got mover for a deferral and a seconder. I will call the question, unless we wanted to have a recorded vote. I'm not seeing anyone. Oh, I'm seeing Counselor Martin would like to have a recorded vote. So with that, Andy, could you please read out the deferral as presented and call the question for us?
Sure, that the second portion of the motion be deferred to the 2020 rate budget? Or, sorry, Counselor Van Passen, did you say rate or levy?
The levy.
Okay, well, there is a bit of an issue, because that effectively defeats the motion. A deferral can't negate the intent of the initial motion, because we will have set the 2020 rates prior to the levy budget.
I think Jason Burgess has a fix for us for that. We'll receive some information, but ultimately, it's going to be put on the operating, is what I was hearing.
Yeah, I think, I think everyone was using the term rate instead of user fee budget, and so I think that was just bad on all of our parts. I think the challenge with this year's user fee budget is portions of it may not, are likely to be deferred until the general levy. That's going to be a staff recommendation coming through that budget. So I, I think maybe for, for clarity, if I would provide advice, you'd want to defer it to the user fee budget with the expectation that some of that part of that budget may be deferred.
Accepted by the mover?
Yep, the user fee budget would be fine.
All right, let's call this question. We want a recorded vote, Andy.
All right, so a recorded vote on a deferral of the, of the motion to the user fee budget. Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Columbus?
Yes.
Counselor Van Passen?
Counselor Huffman?
No.
Counselor Michelli?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
No.
Counselor, oh, Mayor Chop?
Yes.
And Counselor Rabbits?
Yes.
The deferral carries.
With that, I think that was all that I needed to do, unless someone had another motion they wanted to put on the floor. Otherwise, I will relinquish the chair back to you, Mayor Chop.
Thank you, Counselor Rabbits, for doing that. Much appreciated. Okay, I guess at this point now, there's no notices of motion. Are there any general announcements before moving into closed session? Counselor Van Passen?
Just, well, it was in the staff newsletter that the Still Standing episode that is focused on the big city of Vittoria will be airing on C B C Tuesday, October 27th at 8:00 P. M. So everybody can hopefully tune in. Hopefully, we'll be done artwork by 8:00 P. M. that day.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My, my item is just, I would like to just pull or review one of the action item lists. I, I do believe that maybe there has been an omission in the description of the direction for staff. I'm referring to action item number 26. Regarding Long Point Parking, the direction is indicating that staff will prepare each April a council memo updating the conditions of the beach access points and any possible closures. But I do believe what's been omitted, because the title of the report is Long Point Parking, I believe that the intention was at that time to add the words "and possible parking alternatives". So if we could have staff just add that to that action item list, that would be helpful and provide some clarity.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Michelli. Counselor Huffman?
Thank you, Mayor Chop. First off, just want to say congratulations to all of the volunteers in Waterford who were able to pull off a subdued pumpkin fest this weekend. It was extremely successful. There was a great music stroll that occurred with many local musicians and artists. There was a circus in the trees. There was a virtual scavenger hunt. There was a makeshift impromptu parade that was done. So congratulations to Matt Circle and Claire Senko of the Old Town Hall for pulling together and making this happen. So that's what good things happen, when people volunteer their time. A couple, I guess, not really action items, but I was just wondering if the organizational chart that I requested last week had been prepared by staff. Second, waiting for a follow-up from Mr. Kridlin as to the request as to what makes a community hall a senior center. And was also wondering if I could get an update on the ice usage in Langton for the individuals of Langton Hockey and figure skating.
I don't believe you have those staff members here right now. Have you tried to reach out to them and send them an email to get those answers?
I have.
Just send an email? Did questions that she had? Okay. Taking a staff direction, Counselor Rabbits, go ahead.
Thank you, and through you, just a general announcement, some ongoing business with the Downtown Simcoe B I A here in Simcoe. We're actively recruiting for an office administrator position as well as a street ambassador position. We have job postings up on Indeed Job Services if members of the community were interested in applying. Consequently, you could also go to the downtownsimcoe.com, the Downtown Simcoe B I A website, and you'll see at the bottom we have contact information. It's director@downtownsimcoe.com is the email address that you could send your resume and your application to. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rabbits. Counselor Columbus?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I continually am receiving communications from persons who have to drive, like, eight and a half kilometers to avoid the County 45 Bridge. And I just wondered, has there been an update with respect to where we are with that for the Ministry of Environment, that bridge reconstruction, which is causing a lot of pain for people who own property on both sides of that big creek?
My understanding is the class order is going to no longer apply as changes in the provincial legislation are no longer going to require an E A over that bridge. As to a further update from there, perhaps staff can bring that back at the next meeting.
Good, because these people are getting quite anxious about it.
Anything further?
I had a couple council members want me just to provide some public comments on the, the mayor and councilor's distribution email list that has been discontinued. Just to provide some information for the public, a lot of the reasons why we are stepping away from that process is because of the high standards of protection of personal information upon municipalities. So we were getting a lot of emails from there, and we were making judgment calls on which ones to put in agendas, which one to put in info packs. And it really wasn't the correct way that we should have been receiving public comment for this. So we do have a web form that will enhance it. If people fill out that web form, you'll be directed there. If you fill it out, that information will all get to comments to council members. But if you are looking to make a comment for the official public, public record, you please send it to clerks@norfolkcounty.ca. That's how the process works. And essentially, this is part of an I P C, Information and Privacy Commission ruling going back to 2016 that says that we needed to change our process. So we hope that the process will be enhanced and have better outcomes. But we were getting a lot of different varieties. When that list was initially started, everything from that list went on an agenda and info pack. But the general tone and tenor of emails over the last five years has changed a lot. So we needed to proactively vet a lot of stuff, but we were making a lot of judgment calls. So now there's no more judgment call. Email clerks@norfolkcounty if you want it to come before council, or comment on the web form, and that information will go just as general commentary to the council members for their information. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy, for improving that process. Anything further? Counselor Columbus?
That should reduce the number of emails that we receive, then I take it.
I, I hope so. I know you do get a lot. You still have your, your personal emails, though.
Okay, thanks.
Anything further? Okay, I have a motion moved by Counselor Michelli, seconded by Counselor Columbus, that council move into closed session at 5:00 P. M. to discuss the following matters: Staff Report, C A O 20-24. That's in regards to an outpat matter on Dover Mills Road. Staff Report, C E S 20-14. Emergency Management Program Committee Appointments. Verbal Update Regarding a Potential Land Sale in Ward 6. And a Verbal Update Related to an Employee-Related Matter Pursuant to Sections 239, 2, B, C, E, and F of the Municipal Act 2001 as Amended as the subject matter pertains to personal matters by an identifiable individual, including employees of the local municipality or board. The disposition or acquisition of land by the municipality or local board litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals or boards affecting the municipality, and is advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. All those in favor? And that's carried.